Meeting of the Committee of the Hall to Order, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Present.
Mr. Hayes? Mr. Otto?
Present.
Ms. Pat?
Present.
Mr. Whalen?
Present.
Ms. Wyman?
Present.
Chair Hoof?
Here.
Next up, we have additions to the agenda. Any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Okay. Staff report, is there a staff report? Next, we have minutes of the previous meeting, is there a motion?
Who have approval?
Second.
In a second, are there any changes, additions, corrections? Matt, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It carries. Next up, we have public input. We've got two cards, if any members of the public would like to speak, there are cards like this in the back of the room. First up, we have Stephen Kaufman of 4 Burnett Circle, speaking on Agenda Item Number Six.
Good evening. I read in the paper, I believe it was on Saturday, that there was a planned expansion of Silver Creek, which I think is a great thing for downtown Urbana. And I think I applaud what may take place in terms of development there. At the same time, I believe that due notice and consideration hasn't been accorded to residents in the property that further development may be taking place on, and I would encourage you to postpone any kinds of decisions and even consideration until that kind of information can be gathered by you and to give the residents of Urbana who live in that vicinity an ample opportunity to see how the planned development of the Silver Creek extension will impact their homes and their lives. And that's what I came here to say. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
For Whalen?
Mr. Kaufman, do you live down there?
No, I live on 4 Burnett Circle.
Oh, okay, thank you.
A friend of mine lives there.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Beldon Fields of 206 West Pennsylvania about redevelopment agreement ordinance number 2003-11-136.
My concerns are the same as Stephen Kaufman's, but I want to be more precise about it. There is a house which is owned by Alyssa Kingston, who unfortunately works nights and could not be here, and asked me to come to represent her concern. The concern here is that it wasn't at all clear that if she chose to remain in her present house, the property lines of which are exactly the same as the foundation of her home, that she would have vehicular access to her home. That is to say that she would be able not only to walk to the house, but to get groceries and deliver them, and to approach the house and leave the house. It is my understanding that there wasn't consideration given to that in the early plans, and I hope that due consideration will be given to it. I think it's particularly important since the city is going to invest something in this, and thus becomes a sponsor of this project, which again, I support, I think is a worthy project, but I think we have to keep in mind the interests and the rights of people who reside in the area before we go along and pass this proposal. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions for Mr. Fields?
Yes. Mr. Fields, do you live down there, have you any interest in the property?
No, I have no monetary interest in it at all.
You have a friend who lives there?
Yes, I do. That's as I say, this is my friend who could not come to this meeting tonight and ask me if I would come.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Barbara Horn, representing Alyssa Kingston of 402 North Lake. Ms. Horn addresses 207 West Vine and Champaign, the topic is Silver Creek Expansion.
Thank you. I too would like to address the subject of sensitivity to long-term residents of the Alyssa Kingston is a friend of mine for over thirty years, and she's lived on Lille Park for over thirty years. I read in the paper that the Silver Creek expansion hoped to make use of Lille Park by possibly creating some access from the proposed convention center. And I would like to express the hope that city taxpayers will not be underwriting a private business, even though I too support the business development project. Basically, that's what I want to say. I think it would be grotesque for someone living on the park to be possibly underwriting through the taxes on recreation, a private business. And so just a hope for great sensitivity to residents.
Any questions for Ms. Horn? Mr. Whalen?
Ms. Horn, I guess you're referring to the TIF district, the TIF district money being afforded, the development of Allen Strong.
Well, my particular example was if there was going to be some kind of path to the park created for use by the clients of the convention center for wedding photographs or whatever, use of the park that might be funded by the city. I don't know the details.
I'm just curious, that's a question that I had too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Dorothy Maturano from 3411 South Persimmon Circle on the Silver Creek Convention Center.
Thank you. Most of what I have to say has been said already, so I'll just reiterate.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes, I will just reiterate what was said. I do hope that the council will give consideration to those residents who live directly on that park and whose lives will undoubtedly be completely disrupted. And as I understand it, not just the easement where Ms. Kingston parks, but also the home where she lives, I think will be impacted by this. And I would hope that every effort is made to keep her apprised. She is unlikely to be able to come to city council meetings because she usually works at night. And also, I also have a concern about taxpayers paying for private business, and I hope that that can be looked into. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Whalen?
There's a lot of questions that I have about this. I'm not going anywhere with it specifically, but I'm curious to know too, that TIF district use of money has not, has been used before for private development. Why would this be so much more objectionable?
I don't think it is more objectionable, I think that, well, I didn't know about it before. I might have said something, had I, but I don't know, selecting particular businesses to, you know, receive tax money, I don't know, that needs to be looked at, I think. But I think, more than that, my biggest concern really is to make certain that the residents on the park, and particularly my friend Alice Kingston, is given consideration by the board.
If I may ask, do you know, are there any other residents down there besides Ms. Kingston?
I don't know, I think, well, yes, there's, there are maybe three or four homes there, I don't know if they're all occupied or not.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, on the agenda with ordinance number 2003-11-135, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Illinois Power Consultants.
Yeah, this is the budget ordinance for the agreement that we passed with Champaign and the university last week, as you recall. It was a total budget of $100,000 to be split three ways, so this would cover our share.
Questions from committee members? If not, motion would be in order. I'm sorry, did you have a question or a motion?
Well, I would make a motion that we pass this on to the council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Motion and second discussion.
I would like to offer this thought. I think that, I've read in the News Gazette certain opinions the editorial staff had about this, and it sounds very reasonable to me that with the past performance, questionable performance of the Illinois Power, and also the uncertainty about their corporate relationship with the Exelon, I guess it is, Exelon, I think it's very appropriate for the cities to be scrutinizing this with the university, and see if we can't find some way to participate in the goings-on in this corporate structure so that we can control and have our input. This is a very important part of community, the power, utilities for power, same as it is for water, or for any of these natural resources. And they call, you know how I argue frequently for private property and private ownership, and I believe in that, but I think that this is a very, very justifiable use of our position and our authority in the cities, so I support it.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, it is true that the latest newspaper reports seem to indicate that the merger is off, and Dinerji, in spite of not being able to keep its service commitments with the staff that it has, is now talking about laying off 500 people. So, in spite of the fact that the merger is off, I think it's all the more important that we go ahead and proceed with this and investigate this option, because it's clear that the ratepayers, not just in this town, but all of the Illinois Power ratepayers, were sold a bill of goods when this deregulation scheme was approved and the utility was sold to Dinerji. They haven't kept these commitments, and it's apparent that they don't intend to. So, I'm glad that we're going forward with this.
Any other discussion? Matt, all those in favor of sending this to council next week, say aye.
Aye.
We'll see that next week. Next up, we have ordinance number 2003-11-135 approving redevelopment agreement with Allen Strong.
Libby and I will handle this, and I'll just go ahead and kick it off. First of all, I can't say how extremely pleased I am that Allen Strong is willing to be an investor in the city of Urbana. He has invested much in the city of Urbana, with Courier, Silver Creek, and other properties, and is willing to make a multimillion dollar investment within our city, and I'm extremely pleased that he's able to go forward on this project. This began some months ago. Actually, to be quite honest, I was discussing with Allen the possibility acquiring this property because of its blighted condition. It's an industrial piece of property that really is in need of demolition and certainly impacts everything around it. And Allen later approached me, and then I provided the city council a letter saying that if the city were not a bidder, he would be a bidder, and that he was willing to go forward with a project perhaps contingent on a development agreement with the city, but willing to move forward with a major investment in our downtown. So, we're very pleased at this point that we've come to the point where we're at a development agreement stage, and that much has taken place, Mr. Strong property, and obviously some of the demolition has occurred already, and it's a remarkable change in the area. This is, as I said, we're extremely pleased about this project, it meets many of the objectives that we have for this area, certainly consistent with our downtown plan. It's a designated redevelopment area by ordinance of the city council back in '86. It's within our TIF district. It's consistent with the plans for redevelopment within that TIF plan for that area, certainly is something that's listed in our comprehensive plan, is consistent with our plans for the area. Certainly, Mr. Strong has a record as a longtime successful businessperson in the city of Urbana. The project would generate additional sales tax and retail for us, as well as enhance the existing Silver Creek property through the addition of parking. We think it overall, it's just a perfect match for redevelopment in that area. We do understand that there's issue regarding an easement, and it's our understanding that that issue is going to be resolved in one way or the other in the near term, and we expect that to happen. And I'll have Libby really go through some of the details, but ultimately, we would recommend that the council consider this at its next meeting, but contingent on resolving this issue. Libby, why don't you add?
Okay, just adding to some of that in the memorandum, we talk about a two-phase project that's addressed in the redevelopment agreement, and the first phase, actually starting already, would be to do clearance of the property to the south of the Helmeck Building, which has had a huge volume of lumber materials, junk and debris, that's ongoing, and would be replaced in this first phase with overflow temporary parking that would benefit the Silver Creek Restaurant. Then in the second phase, a banquet center for 250 to 300 persons, and a bakery slash coffee shop of about 1,500 square feet would be constructed, and that parking area would be paid permanently. So, the first phase occurring in the short term over the next few months, and the second phase within two years, according to the terms of the redevelopment agreement. Also shown on the site plan for that phase two, and there's two site plans included in the redevelopment agreement, a pathway connecting May Street to Lille Park, and that's been a longtime goal, as shown in a number of city plans, and would also show some additional use of the park, and improvements to the existing Silver Creek Restaurant parking. There's a lot of congestion in that parking area, and a need for improved traffic flow and customer drop-off, so that would occur as part of this project. Redevelopment agreement also asks for rezoning of the property from its current industrial designation to B4, which is a central business district, and is found to the east and south of the site. We've mentioned the downtown strategic plan and the TIF District Number Two plans that look at the Lille Park area as an area for redevelopment with commercial and residential uses, and in particular, to improve access to that park as well, and to move away from the current industrial uses on the site. Also shown again on that, Phase Two Plan is an outdoor seating area, which fits in with more recent city goals to get a little more activity in the outdoors where that's allowable. The financial impacts would be thrust of the agreement, performance of the Phase One and Phase Two is that there would be $50,000 in 0 percent loans payable to the developer, and upon completion of that Phase Two project within that two-year timeframe, that that would be forgiven. Heard some comments about implications, and really, this is what the TIF districts are all about, is leveraging improvements in the area. Not a lot of improvements currently from a real estate perspective with the lumberyard, which has been closed for some time, has very low assessed valuation, but here we're looking at a public investment of about $50,000, potentially leveraging $2 million of improvement. So, that's a great bang for the buck, looked from that perspective, and of course, we wish to do that with our TIF project so we can get more done. There's a typo that's been brought to my attention on page three, I lost a decade there somehow, but we're looking up there at the third line at clearing the site by 2004, not 1994. So, okay, a lot of information, I apologize for putting on your chest this evening, and I will just try to walk through it. Questions were raised about an existing access easement, and we were able to track down those documents to show where that easement is provided to the property on Lake Street. And that's shown on this document. You can see, it's just below that Lot Five, it says, "Existing easement length and width unstated." And that's basically the driveway that's shown in this photograph, almost looks like a sidewalk, it's that narrow. And that has been further found in this 1945 document, is in fact granted to the property that Ms. Kingston owns. So, what we've asked the developer to do is to grant an easement along the north side of his property, the house that faces Ray Street, across which this easement passes. So, he does own the property where the easement's located, so we've asked for him to grant an easement along the north side. It's a more easily passable driveway, much more easily passable, but we do, we would like to have that in place, hopefully prior to next Monday's meeting. Clearly, we can't have a house that doesn't have road access provided in some form, so that's the goal, and developer's amenable to that. His attorney's working on the documents and began to do that today. So, as I said, it did take some documentation on that, and we will not allow a property to be without access, that's important. There were questions too, on the impact on the house that were raised, and we discussed these with the developer, and had a revised site plan prepared, that's 11 by 17, and placed on your desk tonight. And basically, what this shows is where that existing house is, that wasn't shown on the first site plan, and heard from at least one council member, it made it difficult to understand where exactly that residence was, and was it impacting, was this plan going to take over this house? And well, no, it's not, but it's shown adjacent, and there's a 10-foot setback on the adjoining property lines. We've also shown a privacy fence around that outdoor seating area to provide a little bit of protection between the two types of land uses. Just to note too, that, you know, this property is currently zoned business, and it is shown as part of this redevelopment area in the city documents through many years. Of course, this property has also been adjacent to an industrial type of use, and the full intention and anticipation is that this would be a more appropriate use to adjoin a residence, as well as, you know, the park really being an underutilized, a very lovely park, but without enough access to really make it utilized. So, that's a benefit that we see that can continue for this residence, as well as for the proposed banquet center. Comments, finally, on the timing? We've been working on this for several weeks, as Mr. Walden mentioned, but always seems like there's something happened at the last minute and couldn't have been anticipated, and certainly that happened here today, as we discovered this legal research on the access and are working to resolve that. Just would note that the developer is already incurring the expense of those Phase One clearance, and today we had our first snow, so there is a timing concern to move ahead with this proposal. And also, we do have revisions, very minor revisions to the redevelopment agreement, which I emailed out earlier, and also just identified what those changes were. I think you have some additional ones as well? Yeah, okay.
On page 15, under Section 7.5, the last sentence, it reads, "Reasons not within the developer's or city's control," it should read, "not within either the developer's or city's control." And then in, where is this? That would be on page 15.
Redraft.
The redraft. And then, on page seven, Article Three, Section 3.2, Conditions Precedent, currently reads, December 1, 2003, that needs to be January 1, 2004. I think that's it, Libby.
Questions?
I raised my hand earlier. Libby, how much do you know about the dealings here? I mean, who owns the properties? There's apparently some people speaking for a lady named Kingston Properties. Does anybody own those other properties?
Mr. Strong can probably answer that more completely. I know that he owns the houses to the east of Ms. Kingston's, Mr. Strong does. So, he owns the houses that are directly north of the Helmeck Building. Mr. Strong currently owns those. Then there are houses to the north of that, that I believe are owned by James Birch. James Birch, Realtor James Birch. I think to the northwest, there may be at least one other that's owned by a private individual, but I think perhaps Mr. Strong could answer more precisely who owns what property in that corner, unless, do you know any additional information, Mr. Walden? Okay.
It's primarily Mr. Strong and Mr. Birch that own all the properties, other than this property and perhaps one other.
Did you have other questions?
Yeah. Well, it's confusing. I've been back there and looked at this property. This is one where Cliff Singer owned a piece of property at one time, controversial Singer Management House. But the question that comes to my mind is, with this development, which seems to be a marked improvement in that area, using Lille Park and connecting with the restaurants, Silver Creek, which is a very nice restaurant, that all is very positive, but I'm wondering about the property rights of this one person, Mrs. Kingston. And is, are there any negotiations at present being undergone between Mr. Strong and Ms. Kingston? There are?
At the very minimum, to result in that access, easement of access to be granted.
Easement of access, and that is the road, since the one street would be, or driveway would be eliminated, there, he's offering or she's asking that another one be provided?
Right.
What is to happen with her residence there? I mean, this thing is sort of overwhelming, it would seem to me, to a private residence being surrounded by it in such a way.
Again, you know, I think she's had the Helmeck property for many years to the south, it has been closed for a few years. I'm sure that there have been discussions about, you know, would she be willing to sell, but I think this plan here is, does not anticipate that. But, you know, perhaps someday she would wish to, it's zoned business, and, you know, perhaps someday she would wish to do that.
Well, she at liberty to sell it to anything, any kind of a business? I mean, what would be the zoning?
Of course, it's a landlocked piece.
Yes.
That limits its reuse.
Okay, it's land, but it wouldn't be landlocked if there was another driveway provided? You can't landlock a piece of property.
The ownership would be landlocked, but she would retain easement of access.
Pardon me?
It's landlocked now.
It is landlocked.
But there's easement of access.
Well, what about this driveway?
It's an easement, she doesn't own it.
But she doesn't own it.
Mr. Strong owns the driveway.
But it's an easement, and when you do take a piece of property and you put it within, say, farmland or something like that, you do have to provide easement. It's, I believe it's a matter of law, isn't it? Did our council?
Yeah, well, you have to have access, there's no question. There's no question about that. Right. What we have is that area, for whatever reason, many, many years ago, the city allowed or didn't know that it was being carved up into smaller and smaller pieces. And what we ended up with, and perhaps it's one reason it's designated as a redevelopment area, is that without property assembly and combining these smaller pieces into larger development tracks, it's really not developable. So that's what happened, yeah.
I've been back there. Like I said, I've been back there and I've been almost lost back in there. Couldn't get my car in or walking around could have found, found difficult to get out of there. That's a, it's a strange place. You know, but in any case, I'm very concerned about the private property rights of this lady, Mrs. Kingston. I welcome the development by Mr. Strong, happen to be a friend of his father's, and I welcome their contribution to the city of Urbana. But I am very concerned, as I have been in the past, about private property rights. And I think that this lady has rights, and she's a little uncertain about what they are. And it seems to me that there has to be more of an airing of this development. I notice in the, it says that, you know, they're going to use TIF money in the amount of $50,000 because Mr. Strong cannot afford to move ahead. Well, I wonder about that. I mean, he's quite a developer. But, and I don't, the reason for it is a little, I question, but the idea, the notion of contributing to this and with TIF money, I think is perfectly okay. So I don't know why we have to give that reason. And then I guess if the sound, if the second phase is completed and it's open for business on or before 2005, the loan will be forgiven. It's a pretty sweet deal. And it's good. I mean, we've been talking about developing this corner for some time, and it's been the name of the city, and certainly it fits well within, apparently, the vision of Mr. Strong, and that's wonderful. And yet, we do have to be concerned with the impact on a person who lives alone, doesn't have the force of any money or any kind of power other than other citizens to speak in her behalf. So I'm frankly very concerned with that. So I'll just drop the floor.
Your questions? Mr. Strong?
Yeah. Thanks to Dr. Tyler for answering most of my questions. I contacted her and Bruce Walden this afternoon, and you all responded lightning quick to most of the concerns and have lots of documentation to show that. So thanks to you for that. I do have a couple of minor questions that are unrelated to issues we've discussed so far. One is that the proposal involves a pathway connecting Lille Park to Ray Street, and certainly, this is a goal of the city. And I'm very pleased to see that in the plan. When I look at the map, it's more difficult for me to see exactly what that pathway is. And so I see two pathways, which I do believe are existing, multi-use pedestrian paths through the Contemplative Center and then off to the west, that basically spill out into the parking lot. And so I'm wondering if that's what is being spoken of, that it actually is the parking lot that's connecting Lille Park as impermeable surface to Ray Street, and that there isn't a particular path that, say, is separate use than cars that might be coming in and assuming that?
There is a sidewalk, there is a sidewalk that's proposed to connect the two paths that come from the park to the north side of the parking lot and then run to the south side of the building to the driveway. So in addition to the parking lot.
So what you're talking about is a multi-use pedestrian path, which could be used for walking or biking or whatever. And so how do, how does someone who is in Lille Park then get to Ray Street? Is it that they, at some point, they're crossing a parking lot? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they would be crossing the parking lot. I guess, I guess I would raise just a, an issue of safety that it may, right now, it's not clear to me, looking at this, how someone who is, say, for example, wanted to go from Carl Hospital to Silver Creek for lunch, and they would be walking through Lille Park, which is a very lovely park to walk through, and then walk along the side of the proposed development, and at some point, there's kind of, they're kind of dropped off into the parking lot. So I raise that as a concern. It's a fairly small concern. I think my major concerns have really been addressed by staff, but just a small concern in terms, you know, speaking to the developer as well as the staff in terms of looking at how people use paths and what is kind of safe for, to get people from here to there. For example, let me just tell you an alternative. If there was a path on the south side of the parking lot as well, pedestrian path, then pedestrians could basically go around the parking lot and walk along the tracks and then come all the way into the, to the street to cross, et cetera. So, and, you know, eventually, if there was quite a bit of traffic, then, you know, there could be signage, watch for pedestrians, et cetera. So something to consider in looking at possibilities in terms of pedestrian safety and really in the best interest, I think, of the developer as well as the city to, you know, provide maybe a clearer access to, pedestrian access to the park. I'm assuming, because there's quite a bit of bicycle activity in Crystal Lake Park and around this area, that there may also be bicycles, both in terms of pedestrian and bicycle safety. The second question I had is just whether or not there would be particular times during the day or on the weekend when the parking here could also be used for access to the park? Do you happen to know if that's the case?
I think some of these questions Mr. Strong should probably answer here.
Yeah, and as well as a pathway connection might be, Mr. Strong or Mr. Burgett may want, wish to respond to that, so.
Or both. Guys can come up, get in the chair.
Well, the two questions are just pathway access to Ray Street for bicycles as well, pedestrians, bicycles, of course, needing some kind of dip in the currage. And then, and also, you know, just the fear that a bicycle might actually hurt someone who is a visitor to the, to the business if they're using a path along the business. And then the other, and whether or not you would consider maybe a pathway along the south side of the parking lot. And then the second question is whether or not, I certainly know that Silver Creek's very busy during peak hours, and I've seen that, but if there would be particular times in which the parking lot could also be used for park access?
I'll identify myself. I'm Alan Strong. And Mr. Whalen, just to clarify something, no offense taken, I have no relation to the Strong family you refer to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For years, Jim Strong has been trying to convince me that I am, but in fact, I'm not. In fact, I was adopted, and that's not even my birth name. So as much as it might be to my benefit to be related to them, I am of no relation at all. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Nice family.
Yeah, I guess one thing I want to say is that as with any ideas, they born and they grow and they evolve and they change, and they're open to better ideas, and things develop over time. This was an idea which, obviously, with Silver Creek, we put out every week, we send out 20 random surveys to sort of give our customers the opportunity to be restaurant critics and rate us and let us know how they think we're doing. And in those surveys, over the period of years that we've been there, the single number one complaint that we get is the lack of parking, which I think is ludicrous because we have parking, there's parking available. But we live in a culture and a generation where people have available to them parking lot restaurants on Prospect Avenue. That's what they become used to, and that's what they want. And so consequently, I have been looking at the opportunity of acquiring this property for many, many years, and Mr. Helmick would, would never consider it. I've sat there with some frustration over the years in trying to run a, a nice restaurant, having my customers sit in the front window and watch the woodchucks and the skunks and feral cats run in and out of that property and watch the slow denigration of that whole area for years, thinking many years back that, gosh, if I moved down there, this may be the spark that begins a development in this end of town, and maybe we can see Urbana start to grow in a positive direction in this, in this area that's always been considered sort of a wasteland. So when the Helmick sale came, and I was lucky or unlucky enough to become the winning bidder, I quickly put together a, some ideas and worked together with Mr. Walden and Libby closely, who were very helpful and very cooperative. And Mr. Burgett offered his services to try to put something together. And so what we see now is sort of the culmination of my ideas, but it's not to say that this couldn't change or be modified or that this is anything set in stone. It's a, it's a beginning point. It's a process, but it's one that beautifully dovetails with all the needs of that area as well as the restaurant. And I think it satisfies needs within the community for a banquet conference center of some caliber to which people would be proud to have a wedding at, to have some upper end-type conferences. It dovetails nicely with the parking requirements, the, being able to provide a coffee and bakery shop in a retail space that works with, I mean, everything about this just really fits well. And I had already, because I knew this was going to come to council today, last week, I approached Alice Kingston. Because I didn't want her to be blindsided by this, I knew that she was a single person and Liv was probably fearful of, you know, what might happen to her. And I did approach her and presented some possibilities. So she was not just left out, uninformed on this project. I wanted her to be involved and know what was going on. I made several proposals and left her with some things to think about, two of which she responded very positively to and thought that those would work out nicely. So as far as your questions about the pathway, I think on the first plan, we actually did show a multi-perpetrant, but this idea here seemed to just dovetail more nicely with the park, making it more accessible. But certainly, other things could be done that might fit better with, with some ideas for it. So in terms of the access for the park, in terms of space, I hadn't really even thought about that because I don't know that with the visibility and the access issues, that that really becomes a, you know, something that people would want to, I guess, as something that we could look at in time in terms of what the demands on the parking lot were for the restaurant and what would be left over available to, to somebody that wanted to utilize the park. I do know that right now, I go by the park on a daily basis, and I rarely see a single car in the parking lot that is on University Avenue for the park. And I have heard stories from Alice Kingston about the winos and the beer parties and the riffraff that she has to put up with in the park and that consist, meander about So that's just kind of my overview, and any other questions, I'll be happy to try to answer for you.
Mr. Strong, if you still have any questions?
Thanks for the responses, and I think it's just something to think about when thinking about multi-use paths, to think about various modes of transportation. It is the case that this, one of the beauties of this proposal, which I very strongly support and think it, it really fits wonderfully with our downtown plan. I think it provides the, a solution to the parking problem that I know has been chronic. At Silver Creek, I've seen cars kind of piled up almost onto the tracks at times, trying to fit in during rush hour.
Yeah, we call it 115 gridlock.
Yeah, and it's, so it's good to know. I do know that the north, and I'm hoping that this will help, actually, we have a situation where the public is paying for this park and continued maintenance of the park, but the public has very little use of the park, and they don't really access it very often. The north end access is actually quite daneling in and out of that, that access. And so I'm, I guess I'm predicting that people may find your parking lot to be somewhat more useful. And like we have with many downtown businesses, and Bucy shares its parking lot only at specified hours after 4:00 with the library, et cetera. So it's something to think about if you find people accessing the park with your parking lot.
Yeah, I can see that, but Bucy also has, has more limited hours where the restaurant is, you know, it's a different situation. But, you know, I'm certainly open to consider that. I guess we'd have to really see what the demands of the lot with, with the business and the activity that, you know, the, I mean, hopefully, the business is going to generate a lot of parking demand, you know? I mean, that's the goal, and that's what's going to be best for the city and, and best for the restaurant. But I'm certainly open to, to look at different ideas and possibilities.
Okay. I have a follow-up question actually for staff, which it just has to do with, let's see, it's page eight on the old, it's Section 3.3, Discharge of Development Loan. I don't know what page it is on the new, I haven't gone through and highlighted my sections. But in it, it says, "In the event that the private development is substantially completed and open for business on or before October 31 of 2005, the development loan shall be deemed fully paid and discharged." So it's actually a loan grant situation, not just a loan. What does substantially completed mean? Just so, I have a picture of what that looks like. Does that mean that every piece is open for business or what? You know, how?
Well, I think substantial's open for business with a certificate of occupancy, but that's what we've used in the past.
Okay, so there is some kind of precedent for what that means? Those are my only questions for now.
Your statements, wait.
Alan, people have been talking about possibly a co-use or a use of the park by the banquet facility. Had you, is this like a conceptual idea, or do you have some district officials about, you know, if a wedding party wanted to take pictures over in the park and then come and use your banquet facility or something like that? Is that kind of a thing that you had in mind?
Yeah, it just, it just, it dovetails nicely with the fact that there's a park right there, and talked to Robin Hall about it, and he expressed real enthusiasm for that. It just seems like a wonderful way. I mean, here we are, we're supporting tax dollars to maintain a park that's virtually unused. So to make that park more accessible to the public that's paying for it and utilize it and create a, a more usable space just seems to only make sense.
Yeah, so when you talked about this with Robin, it's similar to the concept that they have at the Lake House, for instance, where somebody might book that for a wedding or a party or something of that nature, and some, and they also have a caterer that comes in there. In this case, you would just be acting as the caterer with an onsite business.
Sure.
Adjacent to the park.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, I don't see it's any different than...
You don't have any special arrangement with the park as yet? It's that they're going to allow you to put up tents or something like that, or?
No, there's no arrangements. This is just an idea.
Yeah.
It's just a concept. It just seemed like something that made sense.
Yeah. Well, I agree with you. I think it does make sense, and, you know, I agree, you know, I really applaud your efforts here because the things that you were saying are absolutely right. It's been a dilapidated property for a long time. I can't remember how many years we've been looking at that property.
1964.
You have a date in 1964? And, you know, I think it'd be a terrific... You have a date in 1964? And, you know, I think it'd be a terrific addition to that part of Race Street. So whatever we can do to, to get this to happen and acknowledging the, the concerns of Alice. And I understand, I talked to Alice today and she said she had spoken with you and was considering some of your proposals. So I applaud your efforts to, to work with her as well.
Other committee members have questions? Mr. Whalen?
Mr. Strong, you say you're talking with Ms. Kingston now?
I met with Ms. Kingston on Friday, I think.
Friday?
Mm-hmm. And I showed her an overview of the project and what would be presented to council this evening. And I offered her alternatives to being landlocked. Of course, the first thing I, I asked is if she were willing to sell the property, that would be my first choice of the options. And apparently she actually did indicate to one of the council members that she is considering that as a possibility. But then I also said that with the problem of access, because I, I do own, I own the houses in front of her between Race Street and her house, and I own the house to the north of her, that if it came to the, that where she wanted to stay there, that we would do whatever we could to satisfy her needs. And that would be allowing easement and creating a parking situation on the north side of her property. And then also creating a privacy screen, which actually just was, was brought up today, that that was a concern she didn't express to me. It was brought up today and we said, well, certainly we can do that. She was actually quite interested in the aspect of having a different drive because the, the current drive on the south side is becoming almost impassable. It has eroded and collapsed in areas. And I know in the winter time, there's often, many times when she can't even access her house. She has, she can't get in there or she gets snowbound and stuck in that property. So she was actually pretty, I think enthusiastic about the possibility of having access on the other side, which she felt would be here for her to do. The other thing that I had proposed to her was the possibility of trading houses. Because the house that I owned to the north is also on the park, is a much nicer property and from the standpoint of condition, layout, porch and everything. And she seemed to be very interested in that as a possibility as well. So we're trying to, to do whatever we can to, to satisfy her needs and not disrupt her any more than is necessary.
It seems like you're trying to deal squarely with the situation. And of course you have a concept here that is while laudable, it has some, a number of elements that have to be resolved, which you're finding out, I guess. Any development you have that kind of a problem. But your idea for, for trying to work this out with Ms. Kingston being that she is going to have an impact on her home and her lifestyle, rather, you know, rather, well, rather important and noticeable and certainly we want to make, you want to make that as good as possible.
Yeah, you know, I've tried to be upfront and above board on this. And quite frankly, I mean, I, I guess I maybe got, maybe more enthusiastic and too excited about this. You know, I've been working day and night, putting in seven days a week, working, trying to get this blight out of there. I mean, it's been an unbelievable expense, the, the amount of garbage and trash that was accumulated. It, it's amazing that, that this was actually allowed by the city. I just think that, you know, it was just kind of, everybody just held a blind eye to it and didn't think about it. But it was, once you got in there, it was staggering. It was just unbelievable. And, and so maybe I, you know, just was so enthusiastic about being able to finally do something that'll really make a difference and an impact down here. And then when I was, and then, you know, I've made overtures to Alice and trying to be above board. And then when I was met with such hostility and, and almost it seemed like irrational resistance on this, it was sort of, sort of disheartening.
Well, I guess, you know, understanding that she is a single woman and she lives alone and she's, I don't know how old she is, but she certainly is, sounds like she, you know, she's not quite sure how to handle her business. It would seem to me, though, you, you talked with her just once, Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Would seem to me that if you're negotiating with her, it would also seem to me, I mean, if you're negotiating with her, that's, that's wonderful. I mean, that's what you should do if you really want to clear this up and make it a package. And it's not easy. I've been involved in, in developments and negotiations too, and I know it's not easy. You've got to find a variety of ways of accommodating somebody. You've talked about an exchange of property, that's, that's sometimes a good solution. But it seems to me that with all that the impact, the positive impact and the positive feeling that the city has and your development, that's great. And you've got that on, on a roll. Now, there's a couple of uncertainties here, which it would seem to me be better if you could bring to us something that is, doesn't have these contingencies. So that as difficult as that might seem to you, I'm sure you, you can work something out with Ms. Kingston. You sound like you're really willing to approach her in a very civil way. So, and fair way. I would like to see, since we're investing in this with taxpayer money and-
Well, so, so far the city hasn't invested anything. I have done all the investing and all the work.
Oh, sure, sure. That's not a $50,000 and which would be forgiven, which is most appropriate and we, we welcome that, you know? I, I think your, your positive enthusiasm about this is mirrored by the enthusiasm on the city administration and the council to help to get this thing rolling. But I do think there's a couple of contingencies here that I personally would like to see worked out. Just so it's a smooth kind of a-
Believe me, I wish it wasn't a problem.
No, I know.
I wish that it wasn't an issue.
But it is.
You know, and looking at that, I had to say, well, what can we do? I mean, I, you know, I can't, you know, she has a right to be there and she has a right to her domain. And so we tried to work out something that would work for everybody. So that's just where I'm coming from.
Sure, sure. That's great. And, but it seems like there's another mile that you could march to see if that can be accommodated, I think.
Well, I'm marching.
Good for you. Well, we welcome it. I, I see a very positive response to your plan. And as I said, my enthusiasm mirrors yours for your project. And I know how difficult it is to put something like this together and you're working on it full-time, as you say. But I would like to see if you could bring us something a little less encumbered by the contingencies such as this one.
What are your specific, you say a couple, what are the two?
Well, I'll give you, I think first of all, I think if you can't deal with, with Mrs. Kingston personally, and you may not feel comfortable doing that because when you're negotiating something and you're put on the spot, you either make a decision pro or con, and that's not always to your advantage. Sometimes you want to step back and think about it. And so in this case, it might be good to have your attorney and have her have an attorney discuss this.
Okay, well, I thought Livy already mentioned that that was already in process.
Well, then, so that's being considered, considered.
Yeah, I mean, Livy already, do you want to repeat that, Livy?
It's to ensure that there's that easement of access. The goal of prior to next week's meeting, the two attorneys are working together and-
Yeah, I got that. But you're talking the easement, Livy. You're not talking about the property.
So that she, she may remain there and still have access, which is, you know, as well as a privacy screening.
One aspect, but I mean, you're not talking about, you said you might exchange properties with her or provide her with some kind of a solution that would-
I can only go on what she wants. So I don't, you know, so she has to, you know, I've laid out what the possibilities are. There's only so many alternatives and I have made those, the proposal. It's up to her to say, you know, what she wants.
Well, maybe you need a little time to, to just get some more response from her.
Sure, yeah.
Where, Sarah White?
Well, I think, you know what Mr. Strong is bringing us, if, assuming that the access issue gets resolved, which everybody is working to get that done, that his proposal here can work without any other, without any other conditions. And I'm sure that if he's successful in, in acquiring the property where Ms. Kingston is right now, that he'll probably change his site plan somewhat. He may want to have a larger building or something of that nature. But it works the way he's got it presented here. And so, you know, the only contingency I see is the one that's been mentioned and that's the access to that property.
Ms. Pat, you had your hand up. Did you have?
Well, I just want clarification that if, if Ms. Kingston stays at 402 Lake and she has the access, then-
I can't hear you, Ms. Pat.
This, this site plan is, is possible without acquiring her house. Is that right?
Right.
Right, yeah. So, so we don't, so we don't have to wait for that matter to be resolved. The matter that we want resolved is access to 402 Lake from Race, once this project is, or the contingency for that, once this project's completed. And that's what we're being told we expect will be worked out by next week, right?
Right.
Yeah. So it's, it's not partial. It seems like this has all come together already and that that's the one matter that needs to be resolved.
Ms. Whalen?
It, it seems like there are two issues here. And one is the redevelopment of Home seems to be just a dream come true for the city of Urbana and for the people of Urbana with this proposed banquet hall and bakery, coffee shop area. And I think that it actually, as, as people have, some council members and others have said, will be a great way to also increase usage of Lille, of Lille Park. Because as I see it, there'll be people who will go to the bakery and maybe then pick up some muffins or coffee and go on to go and ride their bikes around town and then stop the bakery or go from the banquet hall and, and spend some time in the park. So I, I think it's a great idea. I think it's, we couldn't have asked for a better proposal as far as what should be developed at Helmick Lumber, at the former Helmick Lumber site. And I applaud Mr. Strong for, for his ideas and for his initiative on this. The other is the easement issue. And I think a majority of council members were able to speak with Ms. Kingston over the weekend. And I just want to applaud staff for being so, responding so quickly and so efficiently to this. I know I emailed Dr. Tyler and Mr. Brolde last night about it after I'd spoken with her and this morning before I went to work at 8:00. I already had a response from Dr. Tyler. So I, and more responses and more information continue to flow throughout the day. I'm looking forward to getting the easement issue resolved, which I think will satisfy Ms. Kingston and will satisfy the, her friends and all the council members who, who are obviously concerned about this issue. And then as, and then we'll look to the redevelopment going forward and really, I think, providing just a marvelous gateway from Lille Park to downtown Urbana and from, off of University, University Avenue down through Race Street to downtown. I think this will be a fantastic development. I, I don't, I don't know that there's a better idea out there or a better proposal that could have been developed above what Mr. Strong has proposed. So I thank the staff for all their work on this and Mr. Strong as well and the attorneys and whoever, easement issue. Because I think that as that is solved, hopefully by next week, that, that this will be a, a win-win situation for everyone. Thank you.
Other questions from committee members?